All right, I am going to call back to order a meeting of the North Andover School Committee, Thursday, February 3rd, 2022, and we are returning from executive session. I will ask you to please rise and join us with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I would remind people if they have an electronic device to try to silence that. I will start with any public comment in the room, seeing none. Ms. Picard, I believe we have two requests for call-ins.
We do.
Was that a statement or a question?
Yes, we do.
I know you had them, so I was like, hmm. If you could connect us into caller number one, that'd be great.
All right. So our first caller is Abby Murphy.
And if you can help us remind her that we have three minutes.
Yep, and I just spoke to her a moment ago.
Okay, perfect.
I try to call people in advance, just so the public knows, I try to call people in advance so I make sure that their phone number is working and alert them to the fact that when we call, it's from a random number created by Google, so it may not be a 978 or a known number.
All right.
So my computer says that we are calling now. Hello, Abby, are you with us?
Yes, I am, hi.
Welcome, this is Helen Picard calling from the North Andover School Committee. You are in the public session now for your public comment, and please try to remember to keep your comments to three minutes and start with your address.
Hi, I'm Abby Murphy, 96 Amberville Road. I'm just calling in to leave a public comment to just please ask for consideration to push back on Department of Education on removing, or at least making masks optional for my children and the children of North Andover Public Schools. Both of my children came into school at the time of pandemic. My oldest is now in second grade. He basically has moved on with his life, except that every day we worry about the social and emotional impact of the continued restrictions on him at school. Actually, right now, I'm sitting in the car for my son's basketball, waiting for him. So he's moved on, he kind of has gotten his groove in school, but every day we worry about it. And the same for my kindergartner, who's learning to read, who has had days where he's been on the bus from 7:35 and hasn't even gotten off till 4:15, like the other day when his bus got into a small car accident where he's worn the mask for over seven hours that day and then had a meltdown that night because he's only five years old. We just as parents are noticing that we worry more now about what continuing with masks on our children are doing towards doing to them than we do about the risk of COVID. And we feel that, you know, given all the things that have changed recently, we would like for the North Andover Public Schools to just really consider how to move forward with trying to make that something that's optional for our children. That's it.
Okay, thank you.
And we'll disconnect now, Abby, thank you so much.
Thank you.
And our second caller is Rebecca Strunk. Hello, is this Rebecca?
This is.
This is Helen Picard of the North Andover School Committee. You are on, in our public session during our public comment, and we welcome your comment. If you could please start with your street address and then please try to keep your comment to three minutes.
Absolutely, Rebecca Strunk, 657 Forest Street. Good evening, I've read Stephen Covey's Seven Habits of Highly Effective People in both my graduate and undergraduate and graduate masters program. One of the habits that has always struck me as most important is that of being proactive. That leads me to ask the following question. What have you done or will you do as a collective whole to be proactive and put pressure on DESI to lift the mask mandate, specifically for our youngest learners? Waiting until the end of the month to hear what DESI, a bureaucratic unelected body, is going to do is unacceptable. Dozens of states across the nation, including those in which we have family, are going to work, school, church, the library, and city hall without draconian mask or vaccine restrictions. They have been doing so for months and are living in freedom, not fear. As elected officials, it is our duty, or is your duty and responsibility to be the voice of our students, to advocate for all of them, even if what you are advocating for may be controversial or unpopular. I, along with many other parents within the community, are tired of hearing that your hands are tied. I know that if DESI mandates are not followed, the purse strings get pulled tighter. Prioritizing money over physical and mental well-being of our schoolchildren is unconscionable. I sincerely believe you know that these mandates are wrong, and many want to know when you will stand up and speak out. As of January 31st, there are a mere 22 students and staff across eight schools who are in isolation for COVID. That is less than one-half of 1% of the entire student and staff population. Does this warrant universal masking of the entire student and staff body? The answer should be a resounding no. Tying vaccination rates to masking mandates is wrong, especially when two-thirds of the active cases, as reported by the Board of Health just last week, were vaccinated. Enough is enough, waiting until the end of the month for DESI decision on the mandate is not acceptable. Whenever the mask mandates are lifted, the expectation is that a swift action is taken and immediate communication is released, stating that masking our schoolchildren will be a choice. We as a community demand accountability. The time is now to do what is right for our children, not tomorrow, not next week, and not the end of the month, today. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Rebecca.
Thank you.
Thank you, I'm going to disconnect the call now.
Okay.
That is all, Mr. McDevitt.
All right, thank you. I was just going to say there are only two calls, no one in person, so we will continue on with the agenda. There is no recognition tonight, although I do think we may have some blockbuster recognitions next time.
Absolutely.
All right, okay. Number five, we're going to move on to the consent agenda for the meeting of, I'm sorry, January 27th, 2022. Okay, so motion made by Ms. Mably, seconded by Ms. Petrowski. Any discussion on the minutes as presented in the packet. Okay, hearing none, seeing none, I'll have a roll call vote. We'll start virtually, Ms. Picard.
Yes.
Ms. Petrowski.
Yes.
Ms. Witzke?
Yes.
Ms. Mably?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. So 5:00, we have minutes from the 27th of January 2022. And now we are on to the highlight of the night, the student report. Lindsay and Ethan.
Thank you very much, we appreciate that nice comment. First, we would like to update you on the NASS 22 Future Plans page. Some more students have committed to where they would like to attend college in the fall, and so we'd like to provide that for you. Summer Gordon plans to attend Bates College with a major in biology and a commitment to play D3 field hockey. Nick Ankiwicz plans to attend Endicott College with a major in finance and a commitment to play D3 football. George Chanakis plans to attend Arizona State University with a major in business. Ashwin Callahan plans to attend Johns Hopkins University with a major in public health and a commitment to run track at a D3 level. Anna Old plans to attend Simmons University with a major in biology, a minor in neuroscience, and on a nursing track. Moore Lambert plans to attend San Diego State University with a major in elementary education. And finally, Avery Bennett plans to attend Roger Williams University with a major in architecture and a commitment to play D3 volleyball. We will continue to update you as more entries are added. If you'd like to follow that Instagram page, it's called N A H S 22 Future Plans. It's very cool to look at. Next, we have the Drama Guild. Next week is the musical Mamma Mia. It will run for three days and it will have four shows total. On each day, there will be one show at 7:00 PM, and on the final day, there will be a 2:00 PM show. Those dates for the shows are February 10th, February 11th, and February 12th. Tickets are being sold at the high school and at lunch, and will be sold at the door. And we hope you'll be able to attend the Drama Guild's first in-person musical in two years. And all attendees are asked to please wear masks for safety reasons.
This month marks the start of Black History Month, and the Black Students Union has worked hard with decorations and posters all around the school, and in addition are making morning announcements. Props to them and their hard work, and let's do our best by reeducating ourselves on Black history, Black pride, and Black achievement. Tuesday was the start of the Lunar New Year, and the Asian Pacific Islanders Club at the high school celebrated by collecting wishes and will link them up and hang them up around the school. They also sold red bags, which is a custom and a tradition to send money to your relatives, to send them luck in the new year. And we have raised a total of $65, and we will donate to an organization of their choosing this Friday.
In addition, the North Andover High School math team had a competition today against Andover, and as always, the rivalry is pretty intense. So we're excited to see who comes out on top this time.
The NASS Interact Club is having a bake sale on the 10th and 11th to raise money for care packages for women in shelters. This will be held during all three lunches at the high school. And the scoreboard for scores as of Wednesday, February 2nd. The girls' ski team, the varsity team, beat Haverhill at an 89 to 46, and their varsity team also beat Newburyport at 93 to 42. Their varsity gymnastics beat Tewksbury with a score of 132.65 over 132.3. They also beat Lowell at 132.65 over a 131.65.
Wow.
And sadly to admit, our wrestling team lost to Tewksbury at a 39 to 36. And our boys' ice hockey varsity team beat Newton over a 3-2. And congrats to the gymnastics athletes and their managers on their senior night, as they've worked hard for all that they've earned this year. And tonight, there is a varsity basketball game at Bill Ricker Memorial High School. And slightly earlier today, there was a game of a junior varsity girls' basketball team. The freshman boys' basketball game at Lawrence High School is tonight. There's also a varsity boys' indoor track meet. Good luck to all our teams and athletes. One final note on sports, the spring registration is now open, so for any students who might be watching, check your email for more information from Mr. Newgen.
And finally, the registration for AP exams is open. I believe the cutoff date is February 14th, so to any students who wish to take any AP exams, please register before that date. More information is in all North Andover High School students' emails. Thank you, and that is all we have for the student reports tonight.
All right, thank you, Lindsay and Ethan. We'll just see if the committee has any quick questions for you, if that's okay? All right, staying virtually, Ms. Picard.
All set, thank you very much, great report.
Ms. Petrowski?
No questions, thanks, nice job, guys.
I'm sorry, I was looking at you and I didn't say it, Ms. Witzke.
No questions, thank you.
All set, thank you very much, appreciate you being here.
So again, just great job. I really want to thank you guys for attending as well. I know it's tough with a lot of demands on your schedule. I know that you guys are going to be working on that kind of end-of-semester summary that's there, so awesome. Thank you very much for putting in some extra legwork and dedication to that as well. And then I really just want to call out, if people haven't started to follow that North Andover 2022 Future Plans, it is awesome. I don't know who is doing that, and I didn't realize that this was an every-year type of thing, but I love seeing the kids with their senior photos and where they're going. So again, I don't know what group is kind of managing that, but that is a great service that you're doing and definitely a lot of work. So Ethan, it sounds like you, or it looks like you.
Yeah, sorry, I just have a quick answer to that. It's the class of 2022 Officers and Advisors who are creating that and are updating it. So obviously, thanks to them for getting all of that information and promoting our students.
Perhaps should have known it was an officer, so. All right, awesome, thank you, guys. You're free to stay, you're free to go, you're.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're going to turn over to Dr. Gilligan for a health update, or in the superintendent report, I think you're starting with a health update, sorry.
We are, and I'd like to welcome Director Barzak here tonight. Dr. Emilia, if you could put the presentation up. Oh, there we go. Welcome, Cheryl.
Thank you, happy birthday again. So I'll start with the At Home Rapid Test Program, which started last week with staff. And this week, the student delivery will be tomorrow. All the tests have been delivered to the schools, and we don't have school tomorrow, it'll be Monday, but as of now, they'll be at home in the backpacks tomorrow. Again. Sure. Again, this is a free weekly voluntary program, doesn't matter if you're vaccinated or not, it's an opt-in program. And DESI, just this week, said yes, people can also use it for symptomatic testing at home, which we had said anyway, but I just wanted to say now, like, it's, now it's in the regulations. Symptomatic in school continues with consent. We had, we had a lot of positives, as you know, with our numbers in early January. Lately, we've probably tested 70 or so students this last week, much fewer positives, six, I think we had this week of the symptomatic testing. Again, all positive results should get reported online on the test notification forum. And positive cases, also, you should contact your healthcare provider. Positive cases at home, so here's our number for today, 22 cases, that has definitely decreased. Just of note, we did meet as a COVID task force, so Brian from the Health Department was with us, and he told us the numbers in town are also decreasing, which is great. But that, a lot of, just be cautious, that a lot of home tests aren't being reported. So for example, there are 76 students absent from the high school today, we only have three COVID cases. There may be more COVID cases that we just don't know about, but still, the numbers are decreasing, so that's a good sign. And here's a graph of where we were early January and where we're heading now, which is great. And then, this is the breakdown every week. The bottom row is what we reported to DESI yesterday, 39 active COVID cases in the schools, staff and students. So certainly heading that in the right direction.
Super fast, but that was 90 last week, and then, am I reading that correct? 90 last week and 39 this week?
Yes.
Okay, all right, I'm just trying to make sure I lined it up correctly, thank you.
Yes. Here's our vaccination rate. When I was here last Thursday, there was a clinic going on, so those numbers are reflected in this new chart. These are numbers as of today. And I mentioned last week that the Health Department is ordering Pfizer vaccines so that we can offer vaccine clinics in elementary schools, and we don't have a date yet for that, but she's continuing to work on that. And as far as the mask, 80% in the high school. As a COVID task force this morning, we met and talked about what we would recommend for that. We are really pleased with our COVID case counts right now, and we are continuing to look at attendance measures in the past. And we've always seen spikes after vacations, so we would recommend that we wait till right after the February vacation. The COVID task force will meet the Thursday that week, in either March 7th, the following Monday, or even Friday, the 4th, could be a good date that we propose. Again, we'll look at positive case counts and attendance as measures. Per DESI, they strongly recommend unvaccinated students continue to wear masks. Masks will be required, not recommended, on buses, indoor sports because of the MIAA, and also DESI has health offices as a requirement as well. We would encourage more students, right now about 428 high school students are involved with the at-home COVID testing program, and this would be a good opportunity for us, while masks are off, for us to encourage more to opt-in, so there would be a weekly surveillance for any cases at home. And that's what I have. Questions?
We'll just start virtually, if that's all right? Ms. Picard, any questions?
Not at this time.
All right, Ms. Petrowski?
No, thank you.
Ms. Witzke?
No questions, thank you.
Thanks.
Could you explain number one again about March 7th? You're saying that at one week after February vacation would be a good time to consider.
So if our, so after February vacation, we'll take a look at attendance and the COVID case counts, and if they're still as low as they are now with three to five cases at the high school, the COVID task force would absolutely recommend masks being optional.
At the high school.
At the high school, right, right, because the high schools reach the 80%.
Correct, I was making sure you weren't saying anything else, okay, thank you.
And did I hear you say that the COVID task force is meeting March 3rd? That's the Thursday?
Every Thursday we meet.
Every Thursday, okay.
Every Thursday.
So that would be the first meeting after.
After February vacation.
February break, and then the 7th, which is there, is actually the Monday.
Monday after.
Starting that, okay, all right, I just wanted to, and I don't remember, I don't have it in front of me. Do we have school committee on the March 3rd?
We do.
We do, okay, all right, interesting. Okay, that was my only question.
Okay.
Awesome.
I'm all set?
Perfect.
Great.
Thank you, Ms. Barzak.
All right.
Thank you, Cheryl.
Do you want to diagnose Holly over here? Just kidding.
All right, and next I'd like to introduce Massey Bucusi, our executive director of special education, to talk about a couple terrific things coming up in special education.
Holly mentioned this last week, I won't let you talk about it again this week. So as Holly mentioned last week, we have Sarah Ward coming for CPAC. We actually also have her coming for our March and April PD days. March for the high school and April for the, I'm sorry, March for the middle school and high school and April for elementary school teachers on our two-hour PE day, for all special ed staff and some others if they want to attend as well, like, you know. And to give the same sort of presentation around executive functioning skills, what they are, how they develop strategies around them, strategies for families, strategies for classrooms. I've seen a couple of posts, she's been in the area and done some other CPAC. The last I spoke to Courtney, she was calling her to make sure, because they've already had a really great response and a lot of RSVPs to that, so, which is great, which is what they like to see. So she was checking with her to make sure we didn't have a cap on how many people could attend, so we're looking forward to that. And finally, after, I think, months and months of trying, we did collaborate on a date for Andover, North Andover Special Olympics. It's been a couple of years. It's not something that I have organized before, so it's my first go-around in it, but I don't know who she is yet, I haven't met her yet, but there's this wonderful person named Cara, who's been, Kathy Keith used to do a lot of the organization, so we kind of had an on-the-spot person, but this Cara from Andover has been just a fantastic resource. So things are in place, the date is June 9th. It was literally the only date between April and, like, the last day of school, that there was no conflict. Unfortunately, there does have to be a rain date, which I think she was checking with Principal Jackson, but it looks like it's going to be June 10th, which unfortunately, if that's the case, there will be some schools, because of MCAS, that won't be able to attend. But again, that was, we went back and forth quite a bit on a date. So ordering t-shirts, there's volunteers, in the past, Kitcher has used it as a community service project, so Best Buddies has been contacted, so. We are, it's our year to host, yep.
Awesome.
Yep. So that's all in place, and like, looking forward to some normalcy. Yeah.
That's awesome, great day.
Can we be included on sign-ups for help for volunteering and all?
Yep, I, this Cara, who I'm already going to give an award to when we meet, because I said, please, like, as explicit as possible, so I will ask her when those sign-ups happen.
Awesome.
It's very, I volunteer before, it's super fun.
Yeah, I mean, it's a tremendous event, I'm sure this year will be awesome, it'll be great to have the kids back. You know, we just did merge with Andover just a few years back, and it's my favorite day of the year. I just love it, and it's an amazing event, the volunteers are unbelievable, and the parent turnout is awesome, and the students have a blast, so I can't wait for it, and hopefully it doesn't rain.
I couldn't contain my excitement at the sergeant fun run, so I'm sure it'll be an exciting day.
Okay, and that's it for the superintendent's report.
Any, any weather updates, Dr. Gilligan, that you're, I'm pointing you on the spot, so.
Yeah, so I haven't had, you know, we're obviously in the meeting, and I've been waiting for an update from the DPW, really critical. I, you know, I sometimes joke, you know, I never went to school to be a meteorologist, but safety is the most important part of what we do. And so I've been waiting for a little bit after 7:00, update from the DPW, and as soon as this report is over, I will post it on Twitter and send it out. Our school will be canceled in the North Andover Public Schools tomorrow. Unfortunately, the ice, freezing rain from 4:00 to 7:00 AM. You know, DPW is pretty confident we can get in early, and unfortunately, the road conditions after are not suitable for safety. So it is not posted anywhere yet, this is the first anyone has heard it live, and I think this is the first time we've ever been a school committee meeting, where I just got the report from John Lavine from the DPW. It's something we take serious, and, you know, I think folks, you know, I sent out something about snow procedures earlier, a couple weeks ago. I'm not sure if people read it, maybe it was even December. And, you know, if we can call school the night before, we'd love to do that, so people can prepare. We can't always do that, even though that seems to be the trend as of late. And so, that's good news, and I wish the students were here when the report came, when the students.
I hope they're still listening.
Yeah, I'm sure they are. They have dialed in. I didn't mean to put you on the spot, but it sounded like you were ready for that, there's no.
Well, you know, it has been a very tricky forecast, you know, and I do consult with other local folks, but I'm worried about the safety here in North Andover, and the report literally just came in to make that decision a few minutes ago, so.
Good timing. And just to be clear, a traditional snow day, there is no assignment, there's no.
Traditional snow day with no remote learning expectations for students and staff. And we will also tomorrow have a superintendent's snow challenge, or I think this would be probably an ice challenge.
Ice challenge.
If anyone wants to participate. So I'll get that on Twitter now, and it will go out in a few minutes.
Okay, awesome. All right, so we will, I'm going to go into the chair's report very quickly, not a ton to hit on here, because we've got other things that really are kind of out there as well. One, again, I think the students kind of said it pretty well, but, you know, the end of the first semester at the high school, and, you know, I think for anybody who understands kind of what happened in the past couple of years, for the faculty and the staff to kind of change what they were doing from a teaching perspective, to then go in and be used to that trimester schedule and migrate over to coming back in a class and having that semester. Well done to all them, and I really want to thank the teachers for pivoting on that. I know that they were excited and ready to do it, but being excited about it doesn't diminish the amount of work and preparation that it takes to change from a trimester to a semester schedule. So that's, that's fantastic. Excited, very excited, as I think everyone is, for Mamma Mia to be back. I, I hope to make one of the shows there. And then I think our, between now and our next meeting, we will have at least a couple of contingencies of students who will leave on exchange trips. I know the Spain trip is going, and I think the German is going, or is that later?
They're in April.
They're April, okay.
Yeah.
All right, and so I know that there have been questions about whether or not students were still going to do them. And they are still proceeding with that. Obviously, some guidelines in place with that, but extremely excited to kind of move forward, so. All right, we'll move over to you, Dr. Mealy. We had the town manager last week, or last week?
So we did meet as a group, the Facilities Master Plan II group, working group. And we are finalizing the final report from MVG around Facilities Master Plan and creating an executive summary that people can read. And then we'll have the links to more information if you want more detailed information similar to what we did with our final report. So that'll be available shortly. And I just want to draw your attention, we're also working on and soliciting bids from consultants to help us with the education for the community. But I think most people are familiar, this is actually two links on the agenda. There's the School Capacity Subcommittee webpage that many people are familiar with. If you're not, here it is. And it has the things that we've talked about. It has the Town Manager's Facilities Master Plan II Building on Success presentation she did last week. It also has all the work that the Subcommittee did, including the forum presentations, the final report, and everything associated with that, the needs assessments, the enrollment data, all of that. I think people are familiar with that. I want to draw your attention to what has just gone up regarding specific to Facilities Master Plan II. And here you can click on a project and see what is being proposed visually. You can see the final report will be available here. It gives you a summary right now, but that will be available the same... The capital improvement plan that the town manager has given to the tri board committee or meeting is there. And the public forums that we've done regarding this. Our final report, the Subcommittee's final report, is all there and we'll continue to add to that as well. So I just wanted to draw people's attention to the resources that are available. Any questions?
Looks like Ms. Picard is saying no. Ms. Petrowski?
No, thank you.
Ms. Witzke? Ms. Mealy? So obviously very exciting. I know that there's more kind of work coming out. I think one of the things that I have heard from people in the community, and I'm wondering if you can speak to, is, you know, there are some renditions of school buildings that are there. When do they start to actually architecturally look at that? I mean, like, people kind of look at that and they're very concerned, you know, like, you know, whoa, like, you know, courtyard of the middle school, right? We hear that all the time. Like, is that a locked-in-stone type of thing? Could you just talk a little bit about kind of where that goes for...
Yeah, and you're right, that one is the one that most people have questions about. We've been dealing with that, as Holly can attest, quite frequently. And basically, you're right. It's an initial assessment by those who have experience, who look and say, well, based on just looking at this kind of back-of-the-napkin type analysis, it looks like the courtyard would be your best bet. But once we hire a design firm, they come in and they do a facility assessment and decide what is the best at that point. And it's going to be also based on input from staff and the community to determine what is the actual best design for that particular project. And that happens to all the projects.
Okay, so people shouldn't take those as being...
I will say that, you know, they're usually right when they make that initial assessment, but not always. So if there's a compelling reason, we should be somewhere else other than the courtyard at the middle school. That will come out during the initial design for that project.
All right, great.
Actually, related to that, would it be useful, or maybe it's already there, to put any kind of disclaimer saying like, you know, these are not final drawings, or it does say that, okay.
As soon as you say that, it's one of the last things we added because we know how important that is for people to know. It's in there that say just that.
Okay, perfect.
Okay. Perfect. All right.
Quick question now, sorry. Is there someplace that has like what the next steps are? Because I believe that the next steps are that we vote at town meeting to start this plan.
Yeah, it's a really good question and reminder to kind of update the timeline. We certainly had one when we were doing the public forums.
Right.
And it's a good time now to kind of update a timeline, having come out of the holidays and working towards town meeting. So, good point.
Thank you.
The Facilities Master Plan meetings that... Would that be on the calendar? Are they public?
It's a good question with it being a working group. I'd have to ask Suzanne if that's something that's required to be posted. I don't think it is.
Okay.
But we can certainly also give a schedule of when we're meeting.
Okay.
Yep.
Perfect.
Is that separate from the Facility Masters Plan Implementation Committee? Those are public meetings. Is this part of the Facilities Master Plan Implementation Committee as well?
I'm not sure what is the implementation committee. I think originally, we talked about an implementation committee, but it ended up being a working group.
There's a, I mean, there's an implementation committee that meets on Monday of next week and has been meeting for years, I think.
Then that's not something I've been a part of.
Okay, so maybe this hasn't moved to them yet.
I don't think so.
Okay. All right, anything else for Dr. Mealy? All right, so I'm not sure if we're going to have Dr. Mealy or Dr. Gilligan, but I'm wondering how we feel about spending... What is it, Dr. Gilligan, 55 million here?
Absolutely. I think that...
I think, sorry.
This is a tremendous recommended budget FY '23 budget of $57,217,000. $200, which represents a 5.34% increase. It also represents one of the biggest increases we've had in years. I'm appreciative of the work we do collaboratively with the town manager and working on this and working with you. And the ability to add this many positions to support our students and staff next year and years to come, I think, is truly special and a milestone and something to celebrate that, you know, we haven't been able to do in many lean years. So yes, that would be the increase, and it's very exciting.
All right. So I would take a motion regarding the superintendent's proposed budget for fiscal year '23.
I'd motion to approve the superintendent's proposed fiscal year '23 budget as presented in the gigantic binder.
All right. Motion made by Ms. Mealy, seconded by Ms. Witzke. All right, discussion. We'll start with you virtually, Ms. Picard.
Nothing to add at this time.
Nothing to add? Ms. Petrowski?
Nothing to add, no.
Ms. Witzke?
I just want to say that I remember this time last year, there were, you know, we were all a little bit disappointed with the increase of the budget. And some of us didn't, you know, some members didn't vote for it for that reason. And the town manager really asked us to take a leap of faith and say, trust me, I know I can't do it this year, but we will get you what you want. And I just want to give her credit because she was true to her word. And this is great that we have such a large increase this year for the budget.
Mrs. Mealy?
I would totally echo what Ms. Witzke said. And as my last budget doing all this, I, you know, we've... Dr. Gilligan has talked about it, it's gone in all kinds of tiny directions. We, you know, jumping up and down, excited about adding 1.2 teachers in places. This is what we've been working toward. And I'm really thrilled and I'm excited to be able to vote in a moment to say yes.
All right, again, thrilled. You know, I think last year, there was so much anxiety about the unfinished learning that was out there. And I think we put a lot of faith and a lot of trust in Ms. Marx, you know, to kind of help lead that and, you know, make sure we had the right people and staff in order to kind of help do that. And to see this work, I think, continue, I think is honestly a testament, I think, to the hard work and dedication that you've done because we're continuing this forward with your leadership and some of the curriculum and coaching and collaboration that we have with our... And I was going to say you have a superb team of coaches and...
There are, I should say, teams. You know, I have my team, I have our central office team, I work with Marcy.
Can you please use a microphone?
Fortunate to have a sped director that I can collaborate with so closely. As if you missed it, my team of people are absolutely superb, our central office team. And out and about with the teachers, we are very blessed in this district. We have a lot of excellent, excellent teachers who are very dedicated to their students and to the progress that they want to see the students make. So we are, as I've said before, I've been in other places. I'm not a lifer in North Andover, so I've experienced other places. I've loved every place I've been, but this is special. There are really, really good people here, so kudos to all of them.
And I was actually going to say to Mrs. Bucuzzi as well, I mean, I think the team that you have with supporting our students with the social and emotional and the guidance and, you know, even some of the liaisons that are reaching out to parents and all that, I think has made a really big difference for that. So I think it's really exciting that not only did we have this this past year, but we are continuing to do this as we continue to work with our students, faculty and staff for it. So thank you very much for all of your hard work. And Dr. Mealy and Gilligan, you guys don't get any credit, it's all them tonight, so. All right, so if there's no other discussion, I will call for a roll call vote regarding the superintendent's recommended budget for $57,217,200. Ms. Picard, what say you?
Yes.
Ms. Petrowski?
Yes.
Ms. Witzke?
Yes.
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. So 5-0, we have a budget for you, Dr. Mealy, pending town meeting.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, and this is very exciting, so.
Awesome.
Can I just add a funny... Holly took almost by word what I was going to say last week, but there were enough accolades going out that it felt like I would have been piling on. But it was really encouraging, and Dr. Gilligan can attest to this, that they did ask us to take a leap of faith last year. And then, but this year showed that they are as committed as we are to this long-term plan. Very encouraging.
Very true.
Mr. McDevitt, can you review for us where this goes from here? Are some folks going to go to the FinCom and make a presentation and all that jazz?
Yep, sorry, let me just get the right tab here. So in the binder, fiscal year '23 budget calendar, so about the second to the last, if you're following along at home. Sorry, Ms. Petrowski. So we had our public hearing on the 27th. We voted today to approve the budget. It then goes in somewhat short order over to the Select Board, I believe, next Monday for their review. It goes to FinCom, basically the next day. The Select Board votes on it at the end of February on the 28th, which gives them roughly a month, actually exactly a month, to put it into the warrant for the town meeting. And then there are some FinCom public hearings at the end of March. And town meeting is on the 17th of May.
Thank you.
Does that help?
Yeah, I just think it's helpful because there's so many pages for people to be looking at. And sometimes people feel like, do we have to do something right now? Like, what do we need to do next? And I just think it's helpful for the public to hear that, so I appreciate you for doing it.
So our vote of approval now basically kind of helps roll this up to the Select Board and then goes to FinCom and then the residents on the 17th of May.
And specific to the question about Finance Committee and presenting to Finance Committee, we've had discussions with the town manager. We will be presenting together to Finance Committee this year. And because there are three new members of Finance Committee, I will be doing a presentation I've done in the past, which kind of outlines and educates people on how the school department budget works. So that'll be part of that as well.
Awesome. I think it was the 8th, if I remember correctly. Going off of memory there, but I think it was the February 8th.
Next Tuesday?
Recommended operating budget forwarded to FinCom on the 8th. And then they vote... Looks like FinCom has their public hearing on the 29th and also votes on the 29th of March.
So based on that wording, I wouldn't say it's a guarantee. It could be the same, it's being sent to them then. But I'm sure that's because it's following the presentation to the Select Board.
Right.
So it's sometime in between those two dates.
Somewhere in there, I didn't think it was necessarily...
During February, yes.
Thank you.
So the Select Board voted in and then the FinCom has final say? I'm still learning.
It's...
Town meeting has final say.
Town meeting has final say.
Town meeting has final say.
Right.
FinCom kind of goes through and makes sure and assesses that it is financially responsible from there. So it's kind of a check, if you will, on the Select Board. Is that a good way to...
That's very good of you saying it. Yep.
Yeah.
Okay.
So Dr. Gilligan gives it to us. We have the review, we present it to the Select Board. They then review us in conjunction with everything else, police, fire, et cetera, DPW, which we'll need tomorrow. And then it goes to FinCom and then...
And what happens if they reject it? Or...
We have a lot of work to do.
Okay.
Yeah.
Whether they support it or don't support it and stuff like that. Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
All right, Dr. Mealy, updated budget report?
Yeah, I can certainly feel questions. At this point in the year, we're right smack in the middle. It's not surprising that unless something earth-shattering happens and is, you know, a major change, then the projections aren't really impacted. And that's the case, we're cruising right along, although, as we've said before, our expenses are certainly higher than normal in order to make the adjustments and have the mitigation factors in place. But this hasn't, the projection has not changed since the last budget status report. We still anticipate using about $600,000 of the S R 3 funding in order to get through this year, leaving us with the amount we'd expect for next year to continue with the recovery services positions through next year.
All right, so questions for Dr. Mealy? Ms. Picard?
None at this time.
Ms. Petrowski?
Not right now, thank you.
Ms. Witzke?
No questions.
Ms. Mealy?
No questions, thank you.
All right, I have one right now, which may be a combo for you and Mrs. Bucuzzi. But special education, I guess, specific probably to out-of-district placement is always something that, you know, is quite an unknown based on, you know, how students are doing. You know, heat is certainly more predictable. I don't know if I specifically see that in here or if it's within each of the schools.
So they, yeah, the 9100...
Where is it, sorry?
Near the end, are the out-of-districts.
Oh, you know what? I didn't see the color change, I thought that was still part of the middle school. Okay, sorry.
So you're right, in past years, we've had, and it's the reason we have a special education stabilization fund, is we've had some major occurrences, surprises during the year that we've had to adjust to. Since adding in the stabilization fund, Marcy and myself and our staff meet regularly to review the out-of-district placements, to project what might be coming up, what's dropping off. So it's really given us a good handle on that. And this year in particular, it's been pretty steady. But we do review that on a regular basis.
All right, so the one item that jumps out to me as certainly being higher is just tutoring and salary for staff. Is that starting to cause... and salary for staff, is that starting to cause alarm regarding stabilization fund? Or...
No, that one is more related to summer activity, and we did not budget what we ended up doing in his grant funding that ends up covering a lot of that. We just haven't done the journal entries for those yet.
Okay, all right. Okay.
I always think it's helpful when we talk about grants, Dr. Merely, to help people understand that a lot of that is entitlement grants that are renewed annually from the federal government through the state. I think a lot of times when people hear that we're paying for things with grants, they're like, you know, they're thinking nonprofit world where grants come and go and change all the time. Our grants are much more stable than that.
Yeah, it's actually part of that presentation that I've done to finance committee, so I can certainly provide that to the school committee as well when I've completed, updated it, and had it ready for them. That does, it may be as, you know, as part of the next budget status report, I can include that and just run through it fairly quickly, but if you have any questions you want to highlight, we could certainly do that.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, so second reading and vote on the mask face covering policy, E B C F A. So...
Attorney Egan is here?
We do have Attorney Egan with us tonight.
We do have, what is actually throwing me in the packet right now, and I don't know if this is my packet or not, but I see the one for new business. I do not see the second reading. I have it from last week, but I'm not sure if it's just not in my packet or I have it out of order.
It's the last two pages.
The mask policy, E C B F A.
Yeah, but that's actually the one specific that...
Well, that's the high school.
For the high school, sorry.
Well, why don't we let Attorney Egan explain?
Okay, all right.
Because I think there's one version.
Right, it's one.
It is, yeah, sort of.
So it's both, second reading of the part.
I can't explain, I'm not quite sure what you have in your packet, but if you, if that's your gym, if you can scroll down all the way, then we can see if we have, we're all talking about the same packet or same policy. There we go.
Yep, it's the same one.
That is the same one.
Yep.
So what we did is after last meeting's conversation about the mask policy, there was a discussion about whether or not we needed to have a, one mask policy and then a separate one for the high school to deal with the circumstances when DESI certifies the attestation and allows the exemption from the state, from the DESI mask mandate. And in that conversation, we sort of thought, I worked with Amy Mabley with this and also the chair, and we thought that it would make more sense to put that sort of process in one policy. And so what we did is we added two paragraphs to our existing policy, and one is the underlined one, and that is, it's new, but it's basically the same paragraph, but it's just worded a little bit differently, that says, "As we said before, the face covering requirement remains in effect until the school committee determines otherwise. However, upon receipt's attestation that a school building has reached 80% rate, the school committee will consult with North Andover COVID Task Force and the Board of Health to determine if the school building will be exempt from the North Andover face covering requirement." And that was in the same language that we had last week with a little bit difference. And then the next paragraph is really where we deal with the issue of when, such as the high school, now that DESI has said that we've submitted the attestation that eighty, over 80% vaccination rate, and that that school will no longer be subject to the DESI mandate. And what we did is we provided three options. The first option is what DESI states and what they recommend, which is vaccinated students and staff will not be subject to the face covering requirement, and it is highly recommended that unvaccinated students and staff continue to wear face coverings. That's the DESI recommended language, and I believe that was also the language that we just heard from Ms. Barzak. And then there's another, then there's two other options that the school committee can consider, and that is, the second one is vaccinated students are no longer subject to the committee's face covering policy. Unvaccinated students and staff will remain subject to the face covering policy. So that's sort of a two, you know, two different requirements for people within the school. And then the third one is just students and staff will no longer be subject to the committee's face covering requirement. That doesn't deal with vaccinated versus unvaccinated. So those are really the three options that the school committee is faced with, and so we presented it in one policy so that it can be more concrete. And then if another school building meets the attestation, and if we need to, if you would like to change the policy, then you can come back to this policy and make some adjustments to it. So that's up for the committee's consideration at this point.
I'm just curious here on this new paragraph, which is in red. Do we have to specify the school?
I was, I had the same question. Well, so what we're, so if you read the underlying paragraph...
Yep.
The paragraph prior to that...
That...
This is says, it says specifically, "Upon receipt of DESI's attestation that the school building has reached 80% vaccination rate, the school committee will consult with the North Andover blah blah blah," and then whether this, or whether a school building will be exempt. So you don't, you could, in your policy at this point, you could say that DESI has determined or that you've submitted the attestation for the high school and that DESI has accepted that, and therefore, this particular determination is solely for the high school building, if you choose to do, if you'd like to do that, to make it as clear as it can be.
Yeah, so I think the intent here was to have one mask policy that would be all-encompassing, but the removal or going to the policy to, you know, go to mask optional would be a separate vote of the school committee, you know, if a school reached the 80% or the rules changed.
What's the idea is to outline here the policy and then talk about, should you implement it to lift the mask mandate from a particular building? If we make that, when we get to do that in consultation with the medical people, and if we do that, we have to pick one of these three things that we're saying. But if we keep lining up all the buildings each time, then that's the implementation of the policy. It seems like you're rewriting it every single time.
I would, no, I was just thinking, my question might be a little different. I was thinking if that red part needs, like, after the words, "No longer in effect," insert "in a building that has reached 80% vaccination."
Or has gotten approved attestation or something like that?
Yes, approved attestation, right. I didn't know if we needed that to be clear, because if somebody just reads the second page and says, oh, there's, it's mask optional anywhere.
Okay, well, if that, and if that takes care of the ideas, we don't want to have to come back with each building.
But then, based on what Cheryl said tonight, if it's mask optional everywhere...
She didn't say that.
I'm just saying, if, if in March they recommend that it's mask optional, then that makes this obsolete again.
Okay. Well, that's why I clarified specifically with her, because I thought at first she was saying the whole district, and she was saying a building that reaches 80%.
That's right. You're right.
And I would just say that...
Forgot about that part.
You know, the commissioner on the national law extended the mask mandate to February 28th, and then they put in a new caveat about if you hit the 80%, and the school committee decides to make that change to go mask optional, they strongly recommend unvaccinated, and that was a change.
That's number, so their language is number one.
Yep, so super fast, before we go too far, because we're already, like, the boat sailed here, is there a motion regarding this? Because we're getting into the discussion.
So I don't know which one we're voting on now. Are we voting on the second reading or the first reading then?
So I thought we were, and that's why I asked what was in the packet. I thought we were voting on the policy without this stuff in it as the second reading, and that the first reading was this policy with this information in it.
Okay. I think the recommendation is Suzanne, because the recommendation is we have a policy, and this has in it, should we come to a discussion about, which we're going to in a few minutes, potentially about a building, it's already taken care of. So it's, we're not voting on a building here, we're just voting on when someday we discuss whether or not we're going to lift the mask mandate because we got the attestation, the policy's already all set.
But...
We have to choose one of these three options. So I would make a motion to accept this policy as it is, but with option number one saying vaccinated students and staff will not be subjected to the face covering requirement, and it's highly recommended that unvaccinated students and staff continue to wear face coverings. That would be the one, so I would make the motion. Are you making that motion? I am making that motion. I have a second.
Okay, so motion made by Ms. Mabley, seconded by Ms. Petrowski. Okay, so we are, you're going to have discussion now, we are only voting on the, we are only discussing and voting on the policy, not whether or not we are removing masks at a school.
Correct. But I have a hard time seeing the distinction between this policy that we don't have now, like the first reading masking, oh, I see, the first reading, what are we reading for that?
Well, that, that's what I thought was this.
Yeah, so this is incorrect, the agenda's incorrect, not, not the first part, not the second reading.
We're not on that yet, so let's not talk about that yet. We're on this.
But it says...
Right?
But Holly's right, because I thought we were adopting the policy without this, and that that policy was going to be an updated policy, which would then supersede this. That was my...
Okay, that was not my understanding. I understood that we were having a policy, and then we're trying to make sure the policy covers whatever discussions we have either today or down the road for any building, we don't have to rewrite the policy. The policy exists, and then we talk about how we're going to implement it. So I agree, the agenda saying first reading is nothing to read.
Right.
That is a problem, I guess.
Which is what happened last week, too.
Right.
Okay.
I can ask Suzanne.
So, so I think I understand the questions, but I'm not, I'm not positive I do, but it sounds like this, so it sounds like there's two things, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but there, you have two agenda items. One is a first reading of a policy, and then you have another agenda item that's a second reading of a policy.
Correct.
And so this policy that's before you right now, this is the policy that would be the second reading. So you've looked at this policy a number of times. You had it on the agenda as a first reading last meeting. It was amended, which we do with a number of the policies. You look at them at the first time, and the second time, if there's changes to be made, they're presented back to the school committee, and you look at them as a second reading, and then can vote on them. Take a vote if you choose or make additional amendments. So this policy is the second reading of the mask policy. And then last meeting, there was an agenda item that stated face mask policy, high school first reading, but that was the problem there, was there was no policy.
Correct.
Written policy, there was a discussion. And so we have an agenda item, your agenda item that talks about a high school face mask policy first reading, there still is no policy written for that, because what we, what we are suggesting or is being presented to the school committee is that that face ma, high school face mask policy just being incorporated into the second reading of your face mask policy, E B C F A. Does that make sense?
It had me until like the last second.
So there's never going to be a first or second reading of this...
Of this policy, I...
Of the high school face mask policy, there'll never be, there is no, one hasn't been presented and one has not been written.
So on our meeting on the 17th, it would be a vote of whether or not we are modifying the mask policy after consultation.
So, exactly. So you would have your policy, so if this is adopted tonight, then your next meeting, you would have, you'd follow your policy. So you have the DESI decision, you would consult with the COVID Task Force and with the Board of Health, and then you'd make your determination. And once you made your determination, you would say, oh, and our policy says now we determine that once we, once we determine that face coverings are no longer required, then either one, two, or three, whichever you adopt into your policy tonight.
Okay, I know Ms. Picard has a question, but I'm just going to try to get clarification then. So if we were to vote on this tonight, we're fine, we're going into, into effect. Then if we decide we are going to vote after consultation with the COVID Task Force and Board of Health, do we need a first and second reading of that?
You wouldn't be adopting a new policy.
It's not a policy.
You'd just be making a determination.
We're just making a determination. Okay, all right, so that may be where there was confusion. Okay, all right.
So after that determination, does anything need to be done? Because this says if, if we determined, so let's say we determine, do we need...
It says if the school fee has determined the face covering requirement is no longer in effect, then we have to choose one of the then's.
Right, but then do we need to have something in writing saying that we've decided, we've determined it?
Well, you'd have the policy, and you'd just be voting to exempt.
The high school.
The high school.
From the policy.
Or another school.
Right, and you have your vote. Your vote is you have a certain thing to vote.
We don't need anything in writing saying we voted that.
The school committee this evening voted to do this.
Yeah, that's why the change from last week. Last week it said masking policy at NAHS, and this was, you know, the masking at NAHS.
Right, okay, all right, sorry. I apologize, Ms. Picard, I know you've been waiting patiently.
I'm not really sure where to quite jump in. It's, it seems to me that when we come back to talk about the high school, or when we get to the next discussion item to talk about the high school, we would be exempting a building, the high school is the one that we're talking about right now, only from a portion of this. We wouldn't be exempting them from all other aspects of the mask policy, because, for example, visitors, guests, and others still have to wear a face covering when they come to the building, and we are still going to follow the M I A A rules.
Correct.
So, so it seems to me that when we do take that other vote, it will be only on, you know, a section of this policy, so it might be helpful to label the section of the policy or all the sections of the policy or paragraphs. And it seems to me the part that we would be exempting a building from is what is currently in red, and that is currently before us as the number one of three options.
Right, so the policy itself, as you're, as you're saying, is in red, it says, if the school committee determines that the face covering requirement is no longer in effect, it doesn't say that this face covering policy no longer applies to a school building. So you're correct, that it's only saying for one particular school building.
And only one part of the policy.
Yeah, 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 just the face covering requirement, exactly.
Well, the face covering requirement, like during the academic day, we're not going to start going against MI 2A, right? We're not going to start having visitors and guests not required to wear a face mask because they're not part of that, you know, that 80%, that herd immunity or whatever we want to, you know, call it. So we would only be exempting the building from what's in red, number one, right now.
Right.
Yeah, I... Do you have a question, Ms. Vitski?
No, I don't follow, because if you look at the very second paragraph, it's exempting that, too, saying that everybody has to wear a mask. I don't, I guess I don't understand the, her, the...
Well, so Holly, if...
Second...
I understand that it's exempting the face mask covering policy, but that's sprinkled throughout this whole policy.
This is the face mask policy.
Right.
So if we exempt the high school from the face mask policy, that's this entire policy, and then we lose the authority to say that visitors and guests must wear face covering, that we're going to follow the MI 2A, you know, requirements for sports.
But, but the policy says visitors and guests and others must still wear a face covering.
But if you exempt the high school from it, how does that...
No, we're saying we're exempting, we're saying what I had, what is it, motioned, moved, just the vaccinated students and staff.
It's only students and staff. It's only students and staff.
It doesn't say like, it's a free for all. See what I'm saying?
Yep. Including during MIAA events.
If you read later on, it calls it out.
That's further down.
Students, faculty, and staff engaged in athletic activities are required. And then we've said it in two different places, right below there, visitors, guests, and others must wear a face covering. And at the second to last line, visitors, guests, and invitees, regardless of vaccination status, are required to wear face covering.
Right.
I, I don't disagree, it's, it's confusing, but as would be constantly writing up drafts, too.
Right. And again, we're not moving to remove masks at any school.
Right.
We're only updating the policy so that we have the ability to move quickly in a meeting to unmask students as they hit the 80% or whatever it is, okay.
But I don't, I, I would, actually, in my motion, I should have included, I liked what Ms. Witzke had said about, after, you know, receiving an approved attestation form, and in consultation, and after consultation, blah, 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 the school committee, like adding the bit about.
Just to make it clear.
Yeah, after receiving the, what's it called, the approved attestation form. I don't know if we can type it in right now, or should we just type it in right now?
And I might also add in that same language that's highlighted right now, the same sentence, just add the word notwithstanding the above, comma, just to show like, they still have to comply with MIAA, no matter what we vote.
Right.
Does that satisfy Helen, your, your concern about that?
We can take that, see what happens.
Okay, and then, just a question, so second page, basically, Jim, could you go up, I think, one paragraph, if you don't mind, please? That's it, uh, nope, down. There we go. The school committee delegates the authority to the superintendent in consultation with the COVID Task Force to reinstate the universal mask mandate should a public health concern arise, either in a particular school or broadly in the North Andover community. University, the universal mask mandate in schools will remain in place and be reviewed at the next regularly scheduled school committee meeting. So the only question that I have is, let's just say hypothetically, the next update on the mask policy will be the 28th of February, right? And if DESI comes out and says all masks can be removed, we would have to wait, in theory, until our next meeting, which is March 3rd.
I thought we were saying that we're saying.
Has the, delegate the authority to reinstate, reinstate or remove, or, or, not remove, that's probably the.
To take action.
To, to reinstate or rescind, I like that. That, that's just my thought, right?
That's what you're saying.
Because if something changes really quick, I do not want these, and.
Right.
I, I don't want these students to say, but now we've got to wait four days for a school committee meeting. Like that, to me, makes.
And I think the purpose of it was, you know, the school committee is voting on whether they're going to exempt a school who hits that mark. This just gives the ability, if there was ever an uptick, once the masks were off, and I could, with consultation with Brian LaGrasse and Cheryl and the Task Force, say we're going to put them back on for a certain amount of time.
Yep.
So, actually, I just realized all the stuff I said that you had said, Holly, it, the previous paragraph that was underlined up at the top, this face covering requirement shall remain in effect until the school committee determines otherwise. However, upon receipt of DESI's attestation that the school building has reached its 80% vaccination rate, the school committee will consult, so we've kind of already said that.
Yeah, my concern was, this is the start of a new page.
Yeah.
If somebody looks at this and says, oh, the school committee, it's no longer in effect, because that if is small.
Right.
And some people will say, after consultation, the school committee has determined.
Leave it under, no, like make it no question at all, repeat, repeat.
All right, so you'd say after consultation, so what would you say, because I want to write it right now.
After the word effect?
Yep.
I would say in a building that has received the attestation from the DESI atta, whatever.
Okay. Yeah.
Technically, we provided the attestation, and they approved it.
That's why I wrote, approved, I've written approved, yep, received and approved. Attestation, everybody hates that word, right? Testation. From. Okay. So.
So if you missed it once, there it is again.
You've got it again.
So I can read over the two, because you made the next paragraph, so here the comment, the changes I have, if I can amend my motion. I'm motioning to have, after consultation, if the school committee has determined that the face covering requirement is no longer in effect in a school building that has received an approved attestation form from DESI, vaccinated students and staff will not be subject to the face covering requirement, and it is highly recommended that unvaccinated students and staff continue to wear face coverings. And then visitors and guests must also, and others must still wear a face covering. The school committee delegates the authority to the superintendent in consultation with the COVID Task Force to reinstate or rescind the universal mask mandate should a public health concern, or should public health conditions change, I don't know, because.
Right.
You wouldn't rescind if there's a concern.
If you don't rescind it, it would give you the ability to reinstate.
I know, she's suggesting that you also get the ability.
Right, to rescind.
To rescind, if DESI, right, DESI comes out on the 28th.
Public health.
You don't have the ability to rescind it.
I wouldn't bother to put the clause about should a public health, blah, blah, blah. I think it would be fine to say, in consultation with the COVID Task Force, to reinstate or rescind the universal mask mandate.
Period.
Period.
I love it.
That's fine.
Or either, I like that either in a particular school or broadly, though.
Yeah, okay.
Yep.
That's fine.
Okay, all right, so that's excellent. In consultation with the COVID Task Force to reinstate or rescind the universal mask mandate at a particular, wait.
Either in a particular school or broadly in the North Andover.
Either in, okay, cut off too much, either, I see, either in a particular school or broadly, blah, 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 okay, great. Because I do not want to draft this as like.
The universal mask mandate in schools will remain in place.
Well, there may not be a mandate if he rescinds it, so that.
Right, that's what I was.
So, the.
The decision will be reviewed? Yeah, any such decision.
I like that, any such decision.
So any such decision will be reviewed?
Will, will remain in place.
Okay. Any such decision.
Will remain in place and be reviewed at the next regularly school, six, regularly scheduled school committee meeting.
Great, okay. Okay, that's my motion.
That's your motion?
That all those changes are made, and that's my new motion.
Did you still second it?
I did.
Okay, all right.
Do I have to rescind the old motion, Helen? Is that what you're going to say?
I don't, I don't think so, no, but what I was going to say is, I would say the next scheduled school committee meeting, and drop the word regularly.
Yeah.
Because if for some reason there was an egregious situation.
Okay, yeah.
Good, the next scheduled school committee meeting, great.
Is it necessary to? The school committee delegates the authority to the superintendent, consistent with this policy, and in consultation with the COVID Task Force. Is it necessary to have that in there? That you just add, consistent with this policy, that it has to comply with this policy?
What do you think? Suzanne, yeah?
Okay.
Because otherwise, without it in there, as Holly has suggested, you know, people can interpret that superintendent has a right to.
Right.
Consistent with this policy. And in. Consultation. Okay. Okay.
If you're adding words, can I just add one thing?
Yeah.
So where it says in either, in either in a particular school or broadly in the North Andover school community, it should say, not in the North Andover.
Oh, yeah, that's kind of important, yep. We can't decide.
Yeah, it has the authority in the.
Right.
Okay, that's good.
So in a nutshell, the school committee votes to exempt the school from the, of the policy. You need, you go mask option.
Right.
And if it was a public health issue, I have the ability to reinstate.
Until the next meeting.
Until the next meeting.
My understanding of that statement was that it was in clarification of a public health concern that could arise either in one of the North Andover public schools, or in the community in general.
Not if you're allowing him to rescind, then that wouldn't be based on public health concern, that would be a, a change in the DESI policy, mandate.
So then in the North Andover school community, it doesn't make any sense either.
But you're, so the, the way this, the way the sentence reads now is to reinstate or rescind the universal mask mandate, either in a particular school or more broadly in the North Andover community. You took out the language should a public health concern.
Okay, gotcha.
Does that make sense?
Yeah.
All right. You want to wait until next week? No.
Well, I should have like. Not a live computer.
No, I, I mean, I think we've got it, and.
And I, I've gotten, I've got very nasty looking, but clear notes, I know what it says.
Okay.
I feel like there's still a discussion that I'd like to have, Mr. McDavid.
Sure.
So I just feel like saying this out loud is, is helpful to me, and perhaps helpful to others in, in our community. I know Ms. Mabley moved that we use number one. For me, number two feels impossible to enforce, and number three, I just don't, I don't feel like that's following what our public health officials are saying. So that's why I'm in favor of number one rather than two or three.
And that's exactly why I picked them as well. It picked it as well.
Okay. Other discussion, debate?
I just, I, at the risk of making Amy go crazy. I just still wonder if in that MIA one, eh, two things, A, should we move it up to the same line as visitors, guests, and others must still? And B, should we put, are still required to comply? Just so there's no confusion, we all know that they are, but.
I, I think I'm fine with adding the are still, and.
Well, still implies a change.
Well, there is a change, because now we're saying this school is, if we vote that a school's exempt, it's exempt from this policy.
With the exception.
With the exception of MIA.
With the exception of wearing a mask on a bus, with the exception of wearing a mask in a health office, with the exception of an athletic event.
Right.
But we don't have that in here.
But I don't even think it has to be still, it's like, no matter before or since, this is the statement, MIA is followed.
Correct.
So that's the only reason.
I know I followed, I'm just saying if, if.
Because I think that calls into question, it probably needs to be still in a bunch of places, then.
Well, no, because they're not, they don't have to in all these other instances, just, just in the MIA, if a school is exempt.
And visitors.
Yep.
Right.
That's those two sentences.
And in a health office.
But we don't have, do, do we have the health office in the bus in this policy?
We've been following that as federal law, for the busing.
Right.
And.
We don't have the power to vote that.
Doesn't need to be in the policy, Suzanne.
We've been following that since the state one.
I believe it is in the policy, I just have to find it, because I know that we've always said, I, I know, I, I believe it is here somewhere about having to wear.
It says they'll give you a mask if you get on a bus, if you don't have one.
It doesn't say anywhere.
So, what if on that sentence we add, students, faculty, and staff engaged in athletic activity, without saying athletic activities, say engage, are still required to comply with MIA league guidelines with regards to athletic activities, federal guidelines with regards to bus transportation, and whatever guideline controls the nurse's office.
I think that's still federal.
On, in one line.
Yeah, right where it says visitors, guests, and others must be wear face covering, federal law, whatever, buses, nurse's office, and then the MIAA, and.
And it follows the chain, so it still makes sense.
Yep. Right.
Yep.
Yeah, so we do.
We're going to have to come back, then, I, we got to type up too many changes.
Well, we do have it in the policy, that it says all, the second paragraph is, all individuals over the age of five years old, including students, staff, and visitors on school transportation and in school buildings shall wear a face covering that covers the nose and the mouth.
Right, that that's not going to be.
That becomes.
Absolute, if we.
Absolute, if you.
Remove it in the building.
Well, you're, we'd only be removed, well, I mean, you can come back, but the way that I would interpret that is that it's saying on school buildings, in school buildings and in school transportation, you have to wear your face covering. And then you have this one exception, okay, and that's when, on your second page, you're carving out a school building for the face covering, because that's what DESI is allowing you to do. You're only doing it because DESI is allowing you to do this, right?
Okay, so maybe I just need to say in school buildings only. I don't know.
Well, the nurse's office is part of the school building.
Right, that's right.
Yeah, I say list it out, like.
Just make it.
Like Marcy's.
Yeah, just don't leave any question to be, you know, just right there.
We have to hold the vote, then.
Yeah.
This is too much to, unless, unless we can vote on, we are going with number one, and then we can clean up the language, and, I mean, unless you guys are comfortable, then I'll type that up correctly, and we'll show it to you next time, whatever you guys want to do.
So.
I would say we come back, because this is actually the first time we're reading number one, so should we technically be voting on that?
This is like the 12th reading.
Not of that number one, this is the first time.
No, I know, 12th reading of the policy.
Yeah.
But in all honesty, I anticipated this taking us a while to go through.
Yeah.
What has also changed is, when we got the attestation in from DESI, the modification for, for number one. And so now we need to be clear, if we remove that from a bus and a nursing and an MIAA perspective, we're fine with that. So I think if we're okay, and Ms. Mabley wants to withdraw her motion, she might help us redraft this, and we'll put it on the agenda for next week.
Yeah, I didn't know about the nurse's office until today, actually.
Yeah, I know.
I didn't either.
Right, and that's been the rules, the rule really all along, and the bus has been the rule all along. I think in fairness to what Mr. McDavid said, when they extended the mask policy under mask general law, the 80%,
Yep.
it was, it only impacted vaccinated students to be mask optional. And when we got the attestation on the 21st of January, so it was January 21st, I spoke with Rob Curtin at the DESE, and he said, oh, this is a change that, you know, is different, that now it's up, you know, you can have a mask policy, but then it's up to the district, you know, locally can make a decision on whether it's, could be, you know, unvaccinated, strongly recommended, and that was the change.
Yep. Okay.
All right, so I withdrew my motion, and we will look at a tidied up version. If you see any other commas and stuff, just can you please let me know? And Suzanne, thank you Suzanne for all you've been doing with all this, I know, it's been a lot.
It's a crazy weird policy, so thank you.
Yeah, it is, I mean, everything keeps changing all the time, I think that's what makes it difficult.
You can just send me, I said like commas, like I don't think we'll discuss it.
Oh, commas, not comments, okay.
Comma, sorry, punctuation.
Gotcha.
Yep, yep.
I think this goes to show, too, how valuable it is that MASC is, is often drafting policy for us. So it's, you know, it's been vetted and it's gone through, and, you know, sometimes we make changes to what they, what they give us, but, you know, we're kind of starting from scratch, and it's a, it's a much more challenging process.
Well, and it's going to change conceivably, building by building, based upon lots of stuff.
Right.
It's not a straightforward thing on.
And the mandate's in effect till the 28th, that could change as well.
Yeah, we could.
And if you can remember, we were spending a lot of time prior to the attestation, and the change on January 21st, talking about how we would police this, and how.
Right.
That would have been a disaster.
So Amy, just one other point, the very last line before the policy will remain in place? That seems to be repetitive, repetitive.
It is, from the other thing above, right? And would you rather have it taken out, but we, because this is what we had originally, then we added it up here to be near the options.
I just think it only needs to be in one place, like to Marcy's point, probably right after the exemption.
I like, because I like the last version, it's got more details to it personally.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, but I think our overall consensus is that we're going with one when you draft the new policy.
That's, I mean, I, I don't know if we have to, that's what I was going to go with unless I hear, then we should discuss if people don't feel that.
Do we feel.
I mean, Helen, Helen was clear about her opinion.
Do we feel comfortable with having Ms. Mably draft this with, uh, option one?
Yes.
Ms. Ricard, I'm assuming a nod?
Yeah, I already said that.
Okay, sorry, I just.
She was very transparent about her opinion, yeah.
Everything has changed, or, you know, like, so, what you said eight minutes ago might not be true. Okay, perfect, all right. And well, uh, my, my understanding when we put together the agenda was that the the old business C, ten C and eleven A would actually be two different things and two different kind of moats, votes kind of going forward. Um, so, uh, there is no eleven A at this point.
Right.
Fair points?
Yeah.
Okay.
Agreed.
All right, we will, we're going to be here for a while, I think, with the public comment.
Oh. I'm sorry, we're.
Yep.
Um, so, I, I wanted to raise this part of our discussion, um, and I was not raising it in that discussion because I thought we were going on to eleven.
Okay.
Other districts, um, did a trial of a couple of weeks, um, with masks being strongly recommended but not mandated. Um, and then they returned after a break to be wearing masks again. Um, I thought that I heard Ms. Barzac say that if the numbers were like they are now, after, you know, at some point in time after the break, they would be recommending, um, removing the mask mandate in favor of highly recommending, um, students and faculty wear masks. Um, I wondered if this committee was going to have a conversation about perhaps having a trial before, um, February vacation, um, returning to masks after February vacation when we historically have seen uptakes.
Didn't she say we needed the, the numbers needed to go down a little bit more?
That was her opinion.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think from the COVID task force, she was saying they would again be revisiting this as numbers continue to go down. Um, I, I mean, don't forget this past summer, we were at zero in town. Um, not just
Right.
one or six or something, you know, within a building, so.
Do we know what we were last year this time?
It's on the chart, I don't know if.
Everybody remember?
I think I said it last week.
She did, I don't remember, I'm sorry.
This time last?
Oh, no, she was talking about before the.
The high school shut down.
Right.
Well, that's right, okay.
Yeah.
Was that in, I thought that was in December.
That was before.
It was December.
Yeah. I think we're in a different spot now. So that.
The COVID task force recommendation is based on, um, wanting to see this trend continue for the next couple of weeks and then survive the break where people are traveling and then we come back and if it's still that same trend, then the recommendation would be.
Go for it then.
We're going forward.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay.
So, this committee is not interested in our trial.
I'll, I'll share my opinion, I, I, I thought it was interesting that some of the districts did that before Thanksgiving because it was before all this holiday stuff, and that's why going back to the mask kind of made sense, I guess, to see how it, frankly, to see how people felt about it and if it caused an uptick prior to holiday. I don't see a benefit of an attest at this point. I feel like taking the mask away and putting it back on is, is too much, um, trauma. Um, that's my opinion.
I would just mention, just so it's clear, that those were the districts that already got the attestation
Right.
at that time, um, and, you know, adjusted their policy and took a vote to remove the masks. Or be mask optional.
Right.
Right.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm going to continue with the language of strongly, uh, highly recommending, um, that students and staff wear masks.
Right.
I'm, I'm not in favor of mask optional or unmasking, that's not the vocabulary that I'm hearing from our public health officials. Um, so thank you for, um, this conversation.
Yep, highly recommended is still what we have.
And then the wording that we have here kind of makes it so we don't really need a trial, because if something changes, Dr. Gilligan can change it as needed.
Right, I think.
I can bring them back.
Right.
Bring them back until the next meeting.
Right.
Right. Yeah. All right. All right, member comments, I feel like we've, we've all talked a lot. Um, Ms. Ricard?
Yes, um, I just wanted to follow up the student report where they talked about, um, Black History Month and remind us all um, that there is black history right here in North Andover. Um, our middle school has a wing named after Cato Freeman, um, and the Freeman family. Cato Freeman was, um, born in North Andover and enslaved from infancy. Um, he later, um, gained freedom. Um, he was a musician. Um, he grazed his cows on the common, he was the first, um, black man able to graze cows on the common in the North Parish. So, um, black history is local history and black history is all of our histories, thank you.
Thank you.
Can I just piggyback on something Ms. Ricard said, because she asked a question earlier about the master plan committee and I can see the confusion, she was nice enough to send me their agenda, and it's, it's confusing because there's a facilities master plan, two, and there's also a townwide master plan committee, which includes everything, not just facilities. Exactly, that's the one that she was referring to.
Okay. Perfect. All right, Ms. Petrowski?
Um, I don't have anything, I am very much looking forward to a snow day tomorrow.
Not for payroll teachers?
Yes.
No, no, they still have to report. Ms. Witzki?
No comments, thanks.
Uh, Ms. Mably?
I was going to bring up actually something similar to Ms. Ricard, uh, I get, I'm sure you guys as well, I get the libraries announcements and all these kind of things. And they put together with a lot of other agencies in our town, a really amazing amount of information and activities for Black History Month. And that involved like the National, the Historical Society, um, the libraries, there's like many, many organizations in town got together to build like a roster of activities and, uh, I just thought, I enjoyed looking at it today and, uh, there's a lot there, so, check it out.
Awesome. Uh, my last comment, again, just, uh, thank you to all of you for, uh, your support with the budget uh, and, uh, town manager and, and Dr. Gilligan and his staff, uh, five point, uh, fifty seven point two million is just, uh, hard to believe that where we were a couple of years ago, uh, and a lot of work still to go. Um, but, uh, great progress and great steps with that, and thank you, uh, for your patience with the mask policy. Uh, it's difficult, it's changing, it's a lot of interpretation as, as we move forward with this as well, so I know it's been on the agenda for, I feel like, yeah, ever, yeah.
Can you imagine how to be not started?
That, that was part of the plan. Um, although I still didn't think it would go this long, so, uh, thank you all for your patience, uh, with that. And with that being said, I would entertain a motion to adjourn to our next meeting on February seventeenth, two thousand twenty-two. Motion made by, uh, Ms. Witzki, second by Ms. Petrowski, any discussion, hearing none, seeing none, roll call, Ms. Ricard?
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Petrowski? Ms. Witzki?
Yes.
Ms. Mably?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes, we are adjourned, five to nothing, it looks like, uh, eight? Eight thirty-nine.
That's early for us.
I know.
I gotta go make my call.
I know, your robo-call. You gotta call your students?